...stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Councilor Rowan.
Here.
Councilor Katerina.
Here.
Councilor Hayes.
Here.
Councilor Bayvine.
Present.
Chairman Donovan.
Here. General public comments, anyone wishing to speak and address the town council may do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll move on. Minutes of March 2, 2016, regular meeting.
Full approval?
Second.
Any corrections to note? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, unanimous. Adjustments to the agenda, there are none, except for one that will come up in a moment.
You want me to do an hour?
Yes, that would be good. Jean Marie Katerina is going to...
Well, it's here at last. We have our Scarborough Facebook page. If you go on to, Tony's going to bring it up here on the screen here. If you go on to Town of Scarborough, Maine, but make sure it's the community page because there's another one under Places page on Facebook, please like it. We already have eighty-two friends, because Jean Marie put a sneak peek out, because we needed to do that in order to secure the address, or I forget what it was. But I encourage everybody to go on Facebook if you're on Facebook and like it. What we're doing basically is we're going to link back and forth to the webpage, as well as, we will probably put fire and police stuff on there. Fire and police will maintain their separate Facebook pages, because they use theirs very differently than we will. Ours is more like a bulletin board, information about meetings and whatever coming up. So, I'm very happy to present this to folks, because I do know that a lot of people, myself included, get a lot of their information from Facebook. So, any questions, anyone can email me at the town council, through the town council web email address.
Just a couple other further comments. The content that resides here predominantly, it's a combination of public works and community service, community services, both of whom had their own separate Facebook page. We ran into some challenges with Facebook, wasn't, couldn't simply collapse the three together and enjoy all of the content and all of the friends and followers. But that's the intent, is that all of that information will now be viewed through this one site, and will be augmenting it with other more general town information as well. As the social media policy that this council adopted last month suggests, we're going to continue to do it at kind of the departmental level. We have key staff that have been doing this right along, have been shown themselves to be very trustworthy in terms of what content they post, and I certainly don't want to centralize this function. I think it will grind everything to a halt, so we want to keep it moving as it has in the past, and we appreciate how important it is to have good, consistent, rich content, at least making people aware and then driving them back to the website for more in-depth information as they would want.
So I want to thank the IT department for getting this together and getting it up, so we're here.
Thank you. All business. Order number sixteen dash zero seventeen. Act on the request to approve the names that were posted to the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals by the Appointments Committee at the March 2, 2016 town council meeting. What is your pleasure?
Full approval?
Second.
This is in order for discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Let me identify the appointments. Appoint Mr. Charles Spanger to the Conservation Commission to fill a term to expire in 2016. Appoint Mr. Michael Richard as second alternate to the zoning board with a term to expire in 2018. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous, thank you. Order number nineteen, sixteen dash nineteen. Act on the request for the town council, oop, new business, skipped one. Order number sixteen dash zero eighteen, first reading, and schedule a second reading on the bond order for the 2016 municipal and school capital improvement projects and the refunding of certain general obligation bonds of the town of Scarborough, and I will ask the town manager to introduce this matter.
Thank you. I'm just passing out something that I'll refer to in a moment. I should have provided this in advance. Yes, what's before you this evening is our typical spring bond issue. This is a bunch of past capital improvement projects. You'll see, we've noted them by the year they were approved, budget authority was granted, and as was mentioned just in the previous session on the audit, as you see, for many good reasons, these projects linger, if you will. At any rate, we're now in a position to seek your authorization to borrow money to cover these costs. What I disdistributed is the same list, but it shows you the proposed length of term for financing each of those items, and please note that it does vary. We do scrutinize the different items, appreciate their life expectancy, and don't ever want a bond any longer than the expected life of the item. So, I think that should give you some comfort. We're not bonding these things for twenty-five years or anything. In some cases, it's as short as three years. The other part of this is to refund certain past, advance refund certain past bonds, two thousand six, seven, eight, and nine series GO bonds, and that's part of the annual analysis, our financial advisor, who members of the Finance Committee met last week, does for us. That's one of the services he offers to look at past existing debt, to see if we can refinance it and save money. Ruth Porter is here, the town finance director. Ruth, what is the present value savings of the refunding? Do you recall that?
Um...
I got it here. It's expected that we'll save about $285,000 by virtue of this refunding of those previous ones. So, in our opinion, it certainly makes financial sense to refinance those old bonds.
Seeing none. Favorite part of the job? It's good. I should pass this around, let others enjoy. This is ready for discussion. Start down at the end, Peter.
Yeah, Tom, just a quick question. The savings from refinancing, is that because interest rates have changed? And what predominantly results in the savings?
I'll, Ruth's nodding her head, yes. I think that's the single largest item. There may be some slight modification of term, but we're certainly not stretching these out for, you know, resetting the bar in that regard. But I want to be clear, there might be some slight adjustment in term, really for alignment purposes. And also, as mentioned earlier, we're looking to level that debt service as best we can. Sometimes pushing a year out will help us in that kind of debt management. Predominantly, it's better interest rate, cheaper borrowing.
But, and so I'm just curious, because it seems like we're in a rising interest rate environment, or at least not a decreasing interest rate environment. So is it just a, do we finance these at a time? I mean, is that, why is this the appropriate time to do it versus not, early, later? Just curious, that's all, just trying to understand.
Through the chair, I may defer to Ruth Porter. Yes, please.
Springtime is usually the best time for us to go out to bond. We seem to see favorable rates when we do that. In terms of the way most of our bond issues are structured, they start out with low interest rates, and they start to increase over the life of the bond. So as the bond gets more, gets older, what we try and do is to, we have to wait at least ten years, but after that ten-year mark, they start to look at them and say, can we get better rates?
Thank you.
And before we, let's place the matter before us as a motion.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Comments?
Two. From what I understand, and I don't want to pretend that I'm either a trader or that I work in this type of capital bond, but it's also a very positive time in which the appetite for municipal bonds out in the market is extremely high, where investors are wanting these because of the tax credits and the benefits. So, the interest rates might only be slightly better, but it's really the appetite for others to buy it, based on what I can understand, what I understand. What I did want to ask, maybe through the chair to our director, finance director, of the $285,000, are there any obligations in which we divvy that up between school and the town, and how is that then applied or allocated?
Ruth, can you address that, please?
It's not that we actually allocate those savings. Well, I guess we do. We take the new principal and new interest, and we say this much is now the schools, this much is now the towns. The amount that we advance refund comes off our books, and if it's the schools, it comes off their books; if it's the town, it comes off ours. So, we do see those. They will see those savings, some portion of it. I don't have the breakdown right now of what it is.
No, yeah, I'm not looking, I was just wondering, you know, whether it's fifty-fifty is, in a way, irrelevant, but the school will get the benefit of the savings within their budgetary control, as well as the town's for their portion, so it is shared amongst both organizations.
To the extent we break out debt service separately, yes.
Right.
I mean, if there were no school projects in these, then no, they wouldn't, but I believe there are.
I think that was important for the citizens to understand, that it is shared.
Councilor Katerina.
Oh, good, you didn't move. Through the chair. This $285, is that over the term of the bonds, or is that in this year?
I believe that's over the term of the bonds.
And it depends on the length of each one of the separate bonds, then?
Correct.
So it's cumulative. Thank you.
I hesitate to make this point, but to Councilor Bayvine's point of good time, municipal bonds are very attractive, I actually heard a piece on the radio, and it defies logic, but there are bonds being purchased with negative yields.
Right.
They are so attractive, and I don't quite understand it, but...
They get the tax benefit of the negative yield.
I was going to say, it's a tax rate.
It's the tax credit benefit.
Other questions?
So, my question is more just kind of philosophically. I wondered, do we have a policy or some kind of, around kind of when we bond on a particular expenditure, or when we would just pay it out of an allocation of, from our budget?
The decision's made every year with passage of the capital budget. We designate whether something is appropriated funds, in some cases, it's grant monies or reserve monies, or bonded monies.
Got you. So that's at the time of the budget?
Yes, and I'm pleased to point that out to you when we dig into the budget.
And that would be something that the Finance Committee would actually look at, the nature of the expenditure, the capital asset, capital item.
A follow-up, if I could. So then what we're doing right now is we're just giving approval to purchase those bonds on the money that we've already decided in the previous year's budget?
Yes.
That we were going to put out to the capital market.
All right, all of these items have received prior budget authority, and all of these items, at the time of that authority, we said we need, we'd like to finance, we proposed financing. We're now in that position and coming back and need to seek final authority for the borrowing.
Other questions? Reminding everyone, this is the first reading, and scheduling a second reading, which would also have a public hearing, I believe. So, no more questions, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Order number sixteen dash nineteen. Act on the request for the town council to consent to the assignment of the parking license agreement and a parking lease agreement to the new owners of the Higgins Beach Inn, and authorize the town manager to sign any and all documents pertaining to this order. I'll ask the town manager to introduce this.
Certainly. The town, in fairly recent years, during my tenure, has entered into two different parking arrangements with the Higgins Beach Inn. One is a parking license. That license has no definite term, it automatically renews. There are provisions within it to undo it if either party wishes, but it doesn't require, no fixed term, if you will. And this is for the use, seasonal use, of fourteen spaces on Greenwood Avenue. If you're familiar with Higgins Beach Inn and the Greenwood Avenue frontage, there are spaces that are immediately in front, and obviously very convenient to the inn. Those were created slightly before my time, but as part of the major reconstruction work that was done down there, the roadway was widened. Just as an aside, Greenwood, like Bayview, is, I believe, a sixty-foot right-of-way. It's very, very large, particularly for that neighborhood, and so there's ample opportunity. And at the time, I think it was thought-wise to expand parking opportunities, given that commercial activity in that part of the neighborhood. Most recently, the Higgins Beach Inn is under contract for sale, and as you might expect, the prospective buyer is interested in enjoying those same benefits. The other arrangement we have is a straight-up parking lease. It's for use of a small little park of the municipal lot across Ocean Avenue, Ocean Street. And when the town bought that lot and configured the parking lot that exists today, this was kind of a carve-out that really wasn't convenient for the public to park in, it's just the way it kind of sat next to the bathhouse. And so, we've made an arrangement with the Higgins Beach Inn, kind of a quid pro quo. There's no renumeration for this, use of these spaces, and it's used by their staff, I should say, it's not patrons of theirs. But they get use of these spaces in exchange for opening and closing the gate on a daily basis. And that saves the town money where we don't have to have staff there at daybreak and at sundown. And so it's worked out very, very well, and I highly recommend we continue these arrangements.
Public discussion on this? None? What's your pleasure?
Full approval.
Second.
Discussion. Let me just add to the introduction that the town manager provided, that the street spaces that are referred to on Morning Street are the ones that face the deck, and I think there are eleven of them.
It's Greenwood Avenue.
Greenwood Avenue.
Yes.
Face onto the deck, so that people can get an orientation. And I think the history of the, it is a sixty-foot right-of-way, Greenwood and Ocean, and Bayview are the three sixty-foot right-of-ways. All of the streets at Higgins Beach are forty-foot right-of-ways. And I believe the Higgins Beach Inn actually did the paving, but it is within the right-of-way still, so. It is public parking, but it is dedicated to their use. In talking with Bob Westberg, the owner, he indicated that he's very excited about the new buyer. He was pleased to say that he looked for someone who had substantial in-keeping experience, and so we look forward to this transition that is about to take place. So, comments and discussion concerning the matter? Will?
Just, again, a clarification. So, this is an agreement that we've already entered into, and what we're being asked tonight is just to allow it to be assigned to the new owner.
Yes, I beg your pardon. Both agreements have an assignment provision, which is a fairly standard contract provision. That assignment requires written consent from the town, and I lack that authority. I really, the council needs to direct me to grant that consent on your behalf.
Thank you.
And the agreements also have ninety-day termination clauses, so that these are not obligations that we're making any substantial commitment of ourselves as a town. Other comments or questions? Ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Non-action items? There are none, thank you. And item nine, standing and special committee reports and liaison reports. Want to start down there with Will?
Sure. I had no committee meet this session, but I did stand in as the chair of the Appointments Committee, when we met earlier this evening, and we have a couple of appointments. On the senior advisory board, we have recommended that we appoint Donna Marie Collins as the first alternate to the senior advisory board, and Kenneth N. Simmons as the second alternate to the senior advisory boards, both terms to expire in 2017. And for the Scarborough Housing Alliance, we have recommended the appointment of Marge De Sanctis as a full-voting member with a term to expire in 2017.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Councilor Katerina?
Yes, a couple of things. Long-term planning, long-range planning met, and we've kind of had to flip our agenda because poor Dan was sick for part of the week, so wasn't able to do what we were going to do. Anyway, we discussed signage. We have ongoing issues with merchants putting up, I guess they call feather signs, those new feather signs, and we do have some restrictions under the ordinances, what you can and can't put up for signage, so we're going to attempt to educate the business people before we have to take any further actions on that. And also discussed a possibility of a recommendation for rezoning of a very unusual lot that's on Willowdale Road that is right near Route One, just to make it a little more workable for the current owner, as far as what the owner could do there. The lot that, the buildable part is right near the road, and it's not very big, and then the back part of the lot just drops off to nothing, so, just on that. And it is where it, it'd be a good transition zoning, is what would occur. Our next meeting is April Fool's Day, so, we will. And then Conservation Commission, on April 11th, the Conservation Commission is having a free workshop that's here in the municipal building, right in the council chambers. It's on backyard composting that will teach you more about how you can compost and start your garden and save money. And I think it's apropos, given everything that we've been talking about, waste stream, and there was an article about EcoMaine in the, I think it was the Sunday Paper, and the cost of recycling and whatnot. Twenty-eight percent of Scarborough's waste stream is compostable organics, and that's 2,200 tons of material, so there's going to be Kitchen Gardeners International, Roger Dwaron, he actually designed the White House garden, believe it or not, Worm Mania, you want to keep worms in your kitchen, compost, Mark Follensby, the State Department of Environmental Protection is going to be coming, and then the Ecos Club, which is a group of kids in Scarborough High School, is also going to do a presentation on what to know about composting. And just so you know, you can buy, most people don't know this, but you can buy composting bins and rain barrels from our Public Works Department, you can get them at cost. I'm not sure what the cost is, but you can go online. Maybe we should put it up on Facebook about that, but...
We will.
But, so that's what's going with Conservation Commission. I'm sorry, seven to nine. And it's free. Invite all your friends. Okay, that's it.
That's it. Peter?
Yeah, kind of three things to report out. One, the senior advisory committee met this week, and they're very excited. There was, I shared last time, there's at least something that's in the budget to start looking at sort of an outdoor recreation area for the seniors. They got very excited about it. They're talking about a walking track and some other things, so they're going to be following that conversation that goes forward. We'll be talking about it here, I'm sure, as the budget process moves forward. Secondly, the Coastal Water and Harbor Advisory Committee met. Good news is, there was a new ladder that was put in down there that they've been talking about for a while, so that was kind of high on their list. Secondly, they're concerned with some signage down there. They're worried about some of the currents that are flowing around the piers, and as it impacts kayakers and some other things, and they're worried about making sure it's real clear to what people need to do to be able to clam and have access to the beach and that type of thing. So that was sort of two things on their agenda. The Shellfish Conservation Committee met, and their big issue, or what they're, let me go back to the coastal waters, or the other big thing they're looking at, it'll probably be coming our way, is they're thinking about some type of ordinance to put in place, or having some real issues with people leaving a lot of stuff on the docks, trash on the docks, like the bait barrels that someone will leave, then people will start throwing, like, oil, used oil into them and some other things. So they're thinking about, what's it going to take to have everybody kind of partake in keeping that area kind of clean and rubbish-free? So we'll probably see something on that. And then on the Shellfish Conservation, they met, again, they're also worried about signage and some other things. So that's kind of, and both of them next month have election of officers, so that's kind of it on my front.
Thank you. Councilor Bayvine?
Thank you. Let's see, I'm going to wrap three altogether. Sedco, so, by the way, tomorrow's St. Patrick's Day. For some reason, every committee, I think, in this town has a meeting tomorrow, one of the most important holidays of the year.
You canceled ours.
I know. It's like, wow. But Sedco meets tomorrow morning, and I'm really excited about that, because they're actually beginning their conversation on their contribution to the Star Communities Program, and how they play a significant role in that, so I'm really excited to be there. We'll report back on that later. EcoMaine is a very important meeting, as you know, the issues that are being faced around the whole recycling markets, the oil markets and so forth, there's some financial challenges that I'm sure will be discussed. And the library trustees will meet tomorrow evening. The bigger piece, really, update around finance. We had two of our meetings last week. Apologize, I was not able to make the joint session. The conversation really focused around the work that has been going on from all of our departments regarding the budget. Talked about the importance of the fund balance, where we are, where we're going, and how can we plan around that so that we can better understand fund balance. The most important, significant meeting is on March 24th. Our next meeting, we'll be having a discussion, it is a closed workshop in that the conversation is for the members only, and I can't remember the name of the, it's like OPEC, Opega? No?
It used to be C-Pair, I don't remember the name.
C-Pair. Basically, it's the Muske School. We'll be providing a presentation around metrics that can be used to gauge educational growth and educational performance in our community, and so it's going to be a significant conversation for us to take that into consideration as we move forward with the budget. The regular finance meeting, we continue our work around fund balance, capital policy. We did have a presentation by our financial advisors for our bonds, which was absolutely a very good overview of where we are in understanding the importance of our community and our credit rating, and how reserve funds play into that, and it's going to become even more and more important as we go forward. The biggest piece for the public to keep in mind is that on April 6th, our first meeting in April, for the council as a whole, the manager will be presenting his budget, which will incorporate the superintendent's budget. And we finally, or we did receive notification through our legislators that our total reduction in school educational funding is 1.056 million dollars. So it's a, well, it's not the 1.5, 1.6 originally, there is a significant gap that is going to take up a lot of our conversation. And then the last piece, we talked a little bit about it tonight, and would like to have advice from my fellow counselors, we need to look at what do we want to gauge our community as a whole around metrics, financial metrics. There's been a lot of conversation about school metrics, but schools are not the only important part of our community, there's fire, police, library services, community services, and other parts, so please take that into consideration, because we're going to be coming asking for your advice later. Thank you.
Thank you. For those who did not see it in the press herald this week, EcoMaine is expressing concern over the recycling markets, which are deteriorating badly. As you know, we participate as a part of EcoMaine, and our recycling goes to them, and that market, I think, in part due to reduced demand in China, is deteriorating, and so that's going to have a financial impact. The Energy Committee met this morning. The town manager, I'm sure is going to, who attended with me, is going to report on several aspects of that, but we are looking at the issue of streetlights, which has been mentioned previously, but it's now reaching the point where PUC rulings exist that will allow for communities to take action, to take advantage of opportunities to better control their streetlight costs. We also heard from the Falmouth Sustainability Coordinator on ways in which Falmouth is moving to improve their energy efficiency. The focus of this coordinator is primarily around energy efficiency and reducing their carbon footprint. The Energy Committee will soon be working on an update to its own energy comprehensive plan, so that's in the works. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple of quick things, just some housekeeping things. I was notified earlier this week that the Land Trust elected a new president. Rick Shinnay is now the president of the Land Trust. Rick is maybe a charter member, has been on the Land Trust a long, long time, long time been the secretary, and I think this might be his first time as president, so Rick is known to many of us. I'm certainly pleased, and had a great working relationship with Rick, so I look forward to his presidency. As Chairman Donovan mentioned, the Energy Committee did kind of a debrief on the solid waste recommendations. waste recommendations last month or month before. They made a report to you. There's a couple of follow-up items that we're working through and I'm pleased to say we're making advancements on. We had thought some of these would be delayed into the new budget year. The first item that we're advancing relates to the educational re-education, perhaps is a better way to place it. I'm just distributing copies of a sticker that will be produced and we'll actually attach these to the top of the recycling containers, although I made the mistake of posing the question to the committee this morning, should they go in the trash container or the recycling container? There wasn't a definitive answer given, so we'll sort that through, but these stickers are really intended to be a constant reminder. Every time someone goes to the can and lifts the lid, this will be a quick little reference. As opposed to kind of the laundry list of recyclable items, this is really through a bit of a infographic, is that what they call it?
Yeah.
Really intended to be a little easier to understand. And you'll note at the bottom, we are choosing to really introduce this notion of composting. It's a really important component. As was mentioned, it's estimated to be twenty-eight percent of our household waste in Scarborough is, can be compostable and out of the waste stream entirely. So, we're really excited about advancing that initiative. Also, Mike Shaw and I have made arrangements with one of the two that we're aware of outfits that are doing, in some communities, curbside compost collection, but we're going to be using them initially for centralized collection. We're going to identify three locations. One will certainly be down here at Main Veterans Home, where the existing roll-off recycling is occurring. We're hopeful to get Walmart on board. And the third location, we'd like to get in that quadrant of town over near Pleasant Hill. And we're approaching Pine Tree Waste to see if they allow us to put this little tote, if you will. And the intent of this, and we're doing some publicity with the vendor, and the vendor is Garbage to Garden, who already has a relationship with several schools. But this is really to add another option to folks, folks that aren't able or want to do backyard composting, this will be free and it's an opportunity for them to collect their waste and distribute it at a central location. And really, what's in it for us is that we're paying seventy dollars a ton to get rid of it at EcoMaine, whereas this will cost the town fifty dollars a ton. So, there's the savings right out of the gate. Every pound that goes in this yard or the other, we're saving money. So, we're pleased to advance both those. I'll send you all a link. The IT department put together a seven, eight-minute video that reports on the results, at least initial results, of the high school laptop, the one-to-one initiative, interviews teachers and students. And I thought it'd be very helpful. Many, all of you were involved in one form or another of supporting that initiative, so by all accounts, it seems to be doing very well. I've got a high school senior, so I can speak on some first-person basis. It's really been an improvement in her experience, for sure. Quickly, with the warm weather, we're actually accelerating the construction season this year. Most importantly, I want to mention the Oak Hill pedestrian improvements. This is a project that's been talked about on and off for about two years in front of this council. And we went out to bid last fall. The bids were not favorable at all. I don't know if it was timing or whatever, for whatever reason, we chose not to advance that. And over the winter months, had an opportunity to work with a number of the bidders and were able to kind of work through the process and get it closer to budget. So, we're hitting a very tight window of opportunity with one of the vendors. Reader boards will be going up and be active as soon as tomorrow. And this project will start to be mobilized next Monday, the 21st. There's about a twelve-to-fifteen-day construction period. And believe me, we're very mindful of the challenges, peak AM and PM at Oak Hill, and we'll be doing everything to minimize that impact. And we've actually chosen to use our police department to assist in traffic control rather than just work on safety. We think that will help facilitate things for the workers and for the residents. Also, we're able to accomplish pretty significant improvements to the parking for Eastern Trail down here off Eastern Road, just below us. We're able to almost double the spaces in the lot and capture some additional spaces on Eastern Road. I mentioned that one, many of the folks at home are users and that lot is often full, so that will be, I think, welcome change. But also, it may be a matter that comes before the ordinance committee. The rest of Eastern Road, we're thinking should be no parking because we've now provided some very good opportunities at the trailhead. I'll mention it, but I don't recall the date. Perhaps someone, Tony, might help me recall it, but we are initiating the Pine Point improvement process. This is the lower end of Pine Point Road. There's a number of improvements we'd like to start gauging community interest around. Dan Bacon's heading up that effort as being assisted by Mike Shaw and Angela Blanchett, the town engineer. The date is in the very near future. I beg your pardon, I don't have it. I'll make sure it's on our Facebook page. And that will be definitely-
It's the 22nd.
March 22nd, is it?
March 22nd, I know it's coming up.
The Fire Barn, down there?
It's at the Fire Barn, so we try to make it as convenient as we can for residents to come and listen to our ideas and so we can get some feedback. And lastly, I'm pleased to announce, we did get a project canopy grant. This is for street tree planting. And this is to locate street trees at different spots along the Route One corridor. One of my personal projects has been, since I took this job, I drive by these traffic islands every day, probably two or three or four times a day. And we're going to actually plant a couple of trees in the traffic islands to help break up the certain stretches of Route One, just below us here on Route One. So, we're very pleased. The local match will be done with in-kind labor from public work, so there's no capital financial outlay on our part. So, I'm pleased to start to do some of that beautification work. As was mentioned, two weeks from tonight, I'll be making the presentation of the budget, so that certainly will be my focus for the next fourteen days.
And once those trees are planted, we're not going to let you leave until they've doubled in size. Is there anything to report on recycling receptacles at municipal locations?
Yes, I beg your pardon, I glossed over that. We are making arrangements to have, in conspicuous locations, right here in the hallway, I suspect, recycling trash and composting opportunities for employees as well as the public. And we're going to make a concerted effort. We'll have similar facilities at all of our events, Summer Fest, Winter Fest. The beaches are a bit of a challenge that we're sorting through, just kind of a logistic challenge, but we're certainly advancing that at the same time.
Counselor, comments? When do we start? Peter, you want to start at your end?
Yeah, good evening, I think. I usually don't talk about political things, but I think probably everybody's observed and seen what's been happening on the national level, just the type of discourse that's going on and stuff that's happening. And just want to bring it back to our community. We can choose to do something different. And as Tom just suggested, the budget's coming forth in two weeks. And that, you know, I'd love us all to kind of keep in mind, we can do it differently here. Let's be civil, let's agree to disagree, let's find ways we can share our opinions. You know, some emails and other things in the past have become less than civil, so let's, all I'm doing is making an appeal that we're all trying to do what we think is right for the town. We all have our opinions, we all have a vote, but let's not do what the rest of the country is doing and being divisive and that type of thing. Let's work together and I guess that's my message. So, thank you.
Counselor Bayville?
Ditto what Counselor Hayes says about the politics. It's an interesting time, both statewide as well as locally. You know, I do want to thank everyone who has put their name forward and that is running for office. I think it's very important that we have that debate. Having Scarborough's voice be louder at the state house is a very important aspect, at least for myself as well, because it does seem, especially with the notice of receiving a million dollars less this year in education, it's even more important that we have that representation. Also, want to say happy Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving. Why? Happy St. Patrick's Day. I'm actually looking at Jean Marie and kind of laughing because I think I'm going to have to move down here all the time because I noticed that Jean Marie's quieter when I'm down here. So, but no, you know, I think this is an exciting time, but keeping in perspective, the budget is starting, so so comes the restless nights and no sleep and some comments from everyone who has an opinion, but I think that we're going to get through this very well. I have a high level of confidence in Tom and Ruth and George and Kate on the school side. I think it's going to be a very good year for us, so I appreciate everyone's patience as we get through that budget.
Thank you. Counselor Caterina?
I would ditto what both of my previous counselors said, and I would remind people that, you know, when you get into this budget process and things start to get a little polarized, that instead of listening to like the neighbors' third-hand, you can go to our Facebook page, or you can go to our website, and people at Town Hall, we're here to serve you. And please get in touch with us and find out what the facts are about what's going on, rather than, you know, thinking things are a certain way when maybe they aren't. So, I would just encourage people to do that. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Rowan?
So, I just want to say thank you to the counselors that spoke before me. I thought that was really well put. I wanted to extend a couple of thank yous to some local businesses. Last Friday night, the Big Twenty hosted a PTA fundraiser for the East Corners Primary School, and it was really well-attended and really well-done. Also, my dishwasher broke last week, so I went to the internets and came across Cole's Appliance Service-
Oh, yeah.
-which is right here on Gorham Road.
He's great.
And he was fantastic, and I now have a working dishwasher, so thank you, Cole. And then my other just note of appreciation was Chairman Donovan has taken upon himself to call all of the counselors prior to our meetings to make sure that everyone's informed enough to date on the agenda and the goings-on that we may not be aware of. And I just wanted to, I expressed my appreciation on the phone, but I just want to say publicly that's a big time, and I'm really appreciative of that. So, thanks, Bill.
Just to pick up on the comments that have sort of been universally, I love the fact that the town council in Scarborough is an apolitical institution. And if you're going to be a public official, I think you have to be able to work with everyone who is participating in that process and show them respect. And I've now made a commitment and I found the first effort was good. It was good to just catch up. There's always something going on that I've become aware of through discussions with Tom or others who I'm working on projects with, and it's good to pass that information around. So, it was a good start with that. I'm very excited to see the trash plan get off the ground, having spent months trying to find just the right starting point for us. And free is always appreciated, and that's where we're kind of starting out with a renewed effort. But over time, I expect we're going to have a very successful initiative on that. I attended the budget meetings just as an observer and very good discussions at the Finance Committee and Joint Finance Committee. Already, our Finance Committee is meeting once or twice a week, so it's quite a task. The town manager and I are organizing the workshops out through May at this point, and so we've got a number of things. Library trustees are going to be coming in in April to discuss with us their strategic planning. We've got some stormwater matters that are going on, so we've got a number of things in that regard. Otherwise, I think I certainly want to extend my congratulations to Rick Shinnay, having attended the annual meeting of the Scarborough Land Trust. His election as the new president is terrific. The Scarborough Land Trust, being private from but very closely associated with the town, has done a fantastic job over the last fifteen years at identifying and preserving and protecting important properties. And so, listening to the message that Paul Austin, the outgoing president, gave was very much one of working harder on stewardship, making the properties available and enjoyable for all the citizens of Scarborough as well as surrounding communities. So, I think that's an exciting development as far as everyone should be concerned. Hopefully, Counselor St. Clair will be back, wishing her a quick recovery from extended knee replacements, so wishing her all the best luck. So, I think with that-
Move to a adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor. Thank you.